Good evening and welcome to the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District Regional Agreement Amendment Committee. As we start every meeting, I'd like to remind everyone that this is being broadcast live and it's also being recorded to be used at another time if need be. So, I'd like to call the meeting director. We're missing a few people. I'm hoping that they arrive, but this committee is essentially to send this to the school committee and be voted anyway, and then it's going to be voted by. It's been brought up. I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the 19th.
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, there's probably not enough members to approve those minutes.
You have to hold till you have a few more.
We'll hold those. We got a review and vote on Section 6 incurring debt and discuss the amended withdrawal of elementary grades pre-K to 8. It was brought up by, I believe, Town of Whitman.
Town Administrator.
Town Administrator Frank Lineham that we were going to talk about that. And he has spoken with Ruth, so let's look at the review on Section 6 incurring debt.
We've talked about that. We received information from Mac and Steve on Section 6 several weeks ago. And this was after having worked with Chris Lynch at Desi, as I understand it. And she asked that this group add the language. And if you go to your handout, you'll go to Section 6 incurring debt. And what they recommended was that that last sentence be put on. If you go down to the second paragraph of the page, "Debt may be incurred by the district if approved by member towns in accordance with the committee's chosen method under Mass General laws, Chapter 71, Section 16, D, or Section 16, N." We felt that that was merely a clarification. We sent an email out to you all and said if there were any concerns, let us know. If you didn't have concerns, we'd be all set. So that's where we are with that. Whether, now that Jim's here, whether we want to go ahead and just vote that officially as we recommend to school committee? We can certainly do that. But we didn't feel a vote was warranted because it was really just an additional clarification. Is there anything you want to add to that, or does that make sense? Yeah?
Just, I think you know that the two different kinds of debt, with D and N. If the school committee by a two-thirds vote selects to go, elects to go with D, it gets sent to the selectmen of the two towns, and the selectmen can decide whether or not it goes to the voters or not. If the school committee chooses N, then it has to go to the voters. So it's just a, just an option for the, basically for the selectmen to decide if debt is needed and how they're going to handle it. So it is just a clarification from Chris Lynch to make sure that it's approved by the member towns.
So Mac, what it does is it gives the selectmen a little bit more authority on which way they want to go with the debt?
Well, the school committee decides first which of those two things.
Yeah, I understand.
But if they choose D, then the selectmen, yes, have a, have an options, have options of how to handle it. It gives them more flexibility.
So it doesn't tie the hands. It's more flexible. I can't see where anybody would have any disagreements with that. Anybody? Okay. Next section is Section 9, Withdrawal of Elementary Grades Pre-K to 8. We had taken out some language about that because it was weird. We had spoken previously, we talked about withdrawal should not be something that is done with ease. It should be something that's taken very seriously because of the ramifications of the cost factor in member towns. This particular part that we took out, if you see it in handout, this is what the language read previously that we removed.
Yeah, I know this came from the committee. I think maybe you raised it initially.
Jim Egan made the motion and Fred Small seconded it.
Right.
We went back and looked at it.
I would just remind this committee, as you probably will remind the school committee, that there's still an option for townspeople to change the regional agreement. It's a little more difficult than this language. This is a language allowed one town to pull out from pre-K to 8. You still have the language in there to withdraw. It says to withdraw from the whole region, but an agreement could be drawn up that says we want to just take out K to 8, but it would mean that both towns would have to vote for it. So there's still a mechanism in there to have that happen even without this.
So we do, in the new agreement, there is a mechanism that rides in?
Yes, it requires both towns to vote for it, but it can, it can do the same thing. And you've been up region for a long time. You've, it's worked well. A lot of kids have benefited from the region. And as we all know, as you kind of said at the beginning, it would be very costly for your towns to go individually, go on their own, to go back and have to have administration and all the, losing all the efficiencies of scale that you have now with the region.
Fred?
The other thing that this language, or item that this language does not address, and that would be any other obligations in the district or the member towns other than a capital expense. So it doesn't, it doesn't address OPEB, retirement, et cetera. How would you even begin to put that into the agreement, so to speak?
I think you're right. If that were to be brought back in there, the language would have to be added to cover the towns for those things like OPEB. You're right.
My thought with this was that I think what you voted was appropriate. I just think that we need to be prepared when this goes to town meeting, if this should come up, as to why was that removed? Just as you've all said tonight, there is a mechanism, if that needs to be an exit strategy, and that it has been taken into consideration. The last thing I think we want to have happen is have all of this work be done and then go to town meeting and somebody, you know, stops it because of that. When I talked to Frank Lineham, he said this was the piece back in 1999 or 1991, '92, when they were doing the regional agreement, that made some people more comfortable being able to have that language in. But clearly, that was over 25 years ago, so.
Fred?
You know, aside of that though, whether it be the new agreement or adding on to this, I think a roadmap as to what the liabilities are upon the-
It's not a bad idea.
-upon the towns should be incorporated within this. Whether, you know, we left that in or we add it on to the current agreement that we had voted on, we perhaps, you know, stated in black and white what the liability should be.
Well, I think if you look at the original agreement, we had some language in there, Fred, that handled some of the financial pieces of it, on the original one that we did before this was brought to our attention. I mean, you're going to get up at Whitman Town Meeting and have to discuss this.
Yep.
And I'm going to have to do it in the answer. Jim?
Yeah, just to reiterate what I said last time was, I don't understand the rationale to allow towns to withdraw from the district to grade 8. What's the, what would be the rationale for that? Why would a town even want to do that or consider doing that? And now, the newer document, the one that we've been creating, has a roadmap in terms of withdrawal in it. So it's very clear how much money and what would be involved in withdrawing, you know, I don't care, K through 3, K through 8. The question really, in my mind, is why? Why would any town ever get to this point? And if they did get to this point, it seems to me they should take the entire district out of the region. It just, I don't think there's a need for this kind of language in the, in the agreement. It seems to me to be a, I don't know, self-destructive kind of thing.
A little repetitious.
There's no need for it. I think without this, we have a relatively clean document. With this in there, I think it gets muddled.
I'm just going to mention that under Section 9, which is still in the agreement under withdrawal, Section C is very clear about the obligations of the member towns. It does clearly talk about OPEB, and it talks about all the responsibilities that towns would have if they tried to, if they wanted to pull out. So I think it is, it is addressed there.
So are you making the statement that it's redundant?
Yes, I think it's pretty clear. If someone wants to get out, they have to, there are four, there are three points there that they have to, to, after the payment of all operating costs for which member towns are liable as a member of the district, two continuing payments beyond the time of dissolution to the district for each member town's share of the indebtedness of the district, which is outstanding at the time of dissolution, and for interest thereon to the same extent and in the same manner as though each town had not withdrawn from the district, and three, other liabilities incurred during all times that each town was a member of the district, for example, OPEB, other post-employment benefits. And then we also, you approved all expenses related to the dissolution of the district will be borne by the member town which initiates the dissolution of the district. Again, this talks about dissolution, but again, a town could say, we would like to pull out K to 8, and you could go through the same process.
Anyone else?
Let's, just, you know, throwing it up into the air, so to speak, let's say a member town didn't want to withdraw. What, is there any, there's nothing in here for assets. In other words, the district would have some assets, but I don't see how that's sort of addressed. It's going under the assumption that if they withdrew, they would not be withdrawing from 9 through 12, so to speak. Sort of the way this is, the way this is written. It says that they're responsible for the indebtedness, but I see division of assets, both towns will be entitled to any assets that need to be divided between the towns. It doesn't really identify, you know, there's an asset equity in the high school, for instance.
Yes. And I believe there's a discussion about saying that any division of whether it's assets or liabilities is, will be taken up between the school committee and the selectmen of the town, so. And to, the concern about writing a couple of specific things in there now is, 20 years ago, there might be different assets or different liabilities, and we wouldn't want one town to say, well, it only says these two things, so we're not responsible for these other things.
I'm just trying to consider any and all questions that, you know, a citizen might raise and won't answer at the town meeting.
Well, you might consider, Fred, let's say that they said we want to dissolve this thing. Whitman might put up the fight that said, we paid for 60 percent, Hanson paid for 40 percent, that's how we're going to have the division of our assets.
Correct.
Because that's how it went by enrollment.
Yep.
And that's clearly stated in the document, that it's a 60-40 split.
Right, but is it a 60-40 split at the time of dissolution? Or is it a 60-40 split over the average, or the split over the average of the past five years, 10 years? I'm just saying that a good document will address anything and everything we can think of, and probably still might be complete, but, yeah. Not trying to keep us all seeing each other that much more.
Oh, I understand. I mean, I suppose if you wanted to get fussy, you could say we could inventory everything and-
Yeah, every now and every then.
I hope I'm not ever here to make that judgment call myself personally.
I don't think that it would be financially possible-
I don't either.
-for a town to pull out of the district. Now, you know what happens five, 10 years from now, and all of a sudden, you may have a local town that says, we really like the idea of regionalization. You guys have your act together, we'd like to join you. And the economy of scale proves to be a very good idea, and now we have three. Then maybe we even get a fourth. Then all of a sudden, say the fourth was Pembroke, and they said, well, we did it once before, we'll do it again, we're pulling back out.
Well, I think, I think, Fred, anytime that you made additions, you'd have to, you'd have to change the agreement-
You'd have to do a new one.
Absolutely, yeah.
Again, and do it completely over, to say, from this date forward, X amount is coming in through the, you know. That's almost like adding a third party and you'd have to change the agreement.
Trying to think of anything and everything.
Oh, I understand completely. Because we want it clean. The question is, do we want to let it stand like it is? We can't vote on it anyway.
The way it's stated, you know, it has the obligations. It has, you know, definitively shows what obligations can and would be, you know, as examples. I don't know that you need any other additional mechanism to say, you know, to pull out to a certain level. Or does it just, or does it increase the right of the town to be able to pull out to that level if it's stated in here prior? So does it preserve a right for the town?
With your pleasure. Want to leave it like it is?
Well, I don't see any harm in either. I don't see any harm in having the language in there that a town could pull out and if they wanted to carry to administrations and, you know, so. I don't see it happening. I don't see it being affordable to happen. But I also don't see any downside in having the language there either.
No.
I do.
Okay.
I think it's more a, what, political, emotional kind of thing. Either you're committed to the region or you're not. This halfway thing just shows a lack of commitment, for lack of a better term, and I don't think we really need to have that there at this point in time. And I see no advantage to including this language.
Fred?
Is there a disadvantage?
Yeah, I think there is.
What is it?
It's just more anecdotal than anything else, but I taught in a regional school district for 35 years. The sense of identity that people have with the school district is diminished a great deal to begin with at the regional level as opposed to the little elementary thing we-
Yeah, we're still at it.
-regionalized from 7 through 12. And the lack of identification, the lack of support for the region was powerful in that situation. As a matter of fact, Pembroke was pulled out, I think, because of that reason. I just believe that if we're going to have a region, we should have a region, and we should support it politically, financially, emotionally, and to offer some, to offer any town the option of, you know, either of getting out of the region to a certain level just seems counterproductive, for lack of a better term. I think it's, it's a way to undermine the support for the school district, and I'm a little sensitive about that, to be perfectly honest. I don't want to see anything like that occur. So I say, we have a region, we support the region, and we go with it. And if we don't like it, we make it better. You don't cut.
No cutting bait, huh?
No, we're not doing that.
Mr. Salvucci's going to be here on the bed and being booked.
We should, we should vote on that other language.
We'll have a quorum, Bob, when Dan gets here.
No, when Dan's going to be here. When Dan gets here, we have a quorum.
Okay.
And he just called me. That was him, that's why he answered it. He's in Whitman Center.
All right, moving right along. And you should probably vote on the incurring the debt too, so it's a clean vote.
Yes.
And the minutes too? Bring him in.
Yep, definitely. I hear what both of you are saying, and I think you both have good points. I do think it is, the language may bring up a little bit of redundancy, whether it shows and it states. I don't know how anyone would do it financially. I don't know how you would break up the OPEB, first of all.
Based on the records of when teachers, from what, which town they were taught in and for how long, it would be a monumental task. I'm sure Christine would not look forward to dividing up OPEB for the last 40 years.
That would be a task.
Well, and then, the town would have to come up with the money in full and put it in an escrow account-
That's right.
-to continue forward-
You're absolutely right, Bob.
-for OPEB benefits, because if they didn't come up with the full amount, and there was a problem, and they were bankrupt, who's going to be liable for that other OPEB? I mean, I can see it, just- You'd have to escrow.
I'll be back.
Yes.
You guys can do this with us.
Yeah. I guess that would be kind of my thought. I mean, who gets, who gets a robot vacuum that's over there?
Finally stopped, now I can hear.
Can you hear?
Yeah, well, I could. So we're going to have a quorum with five when Dan gets here.
And we're only voting to recommend to send it.
I just think, it's impossible for a town to get out because of the financial end of it. So I don't like the separation of the K through 8 at all. I agree with Jim, but I also agree with Fred's-
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, you have to have, you have to have it in there, but you're either in it for all, or, you know, it's just going to create problems down the line.
Oh. To that point, I don't know that it's going to create problems, as we've discovered, once this agreement is done, it's going to sit in a draw, probably until five years from now when another committee reviews it.
Fred, 25 years from now.
Yeah. Well, I thought we were making a commitment to do it every five years.
And then what will happen is they'll sit there and scratch their heads, look at each other and say, what the hell are they thinking about?
Yeah.
You know, why is this here?
No, but that's when they call one of us, and they say, what were you guys thinking about? I'm sorry?
Every five years, based on the census.
Yeah.
But I can tell you, it, it was the last meeting in March, Mr. Hickey came from Sultcho Bo-Tech, no relation to me, and they had eight in their district, and Hull tried to get in. They were just exploring the idea of getting in, but it was much too expensive for the town of Hull to even get into the district. And they, they just went through this thing that we're going through now, but Hull wanted to get, to get in, and it was just too expensive. So if, if it's expensive to get in, it's going to be really expensive to get out.
Yeah. No, I agree. Oh, I, the getting out pot would be, like you said, you'd have to, you'd have to come up with the OPEB.
Depending upon which town you're at, you're looking at 20, 30 million bucks.
Yeah, it's about, it's about 52 million, and then you'd have to determine employees that, how you spun up the employees, so.
But then you'd only have to do two-thirds of it, because they're going to remain in 8 through 12.
Right. 9 through 12.
Yeah, 9 through 12.
It's really complicated.
Yeah, let me just throw another wrench at you.
And that's where I think it doesn't really make sense. You're either all in, or you're not.
Well, that's the only way it can be, all in or not, because there's only two of us, right?
Right.
Well, I guess you can put, you can over-language or under-language any document that you want, and I guess then you look at it, and it's the perspective of the person that wants to pick it apart and say, I think it meant this. I think the intention was that, you know, because as we found at previous town meetings in both Whitman and Hanson, sometimes that discussion comes up about whether it's this or that. People leave, it's kind of like, there's been a lot of, and I'm just killing time, waiting for Dan to get here, there's been a lot of question as to that vote that they had in East Bridgewater the other day on-
On the marijuana?
Marijuana.
Yes. Everybody's saying the question is very confusing, and the people in Whitman, when they had that vote about two or three weeks ago, said the same thing. It was very, very confusing. Does yes mean what? Does no mean what?
So here is.
You know, because of the way the language was it.
Right.
And I read it and looked at it and said, wow, I can see where that could be very confusing. You know voters, they come in and they go, nope. No means no, but no might mean yes.
Well, in that case, it did.
Yeah.
Apologize for being late. My boss made me work late.
Hearing's the real, I can't say it because we're on air, but-
Thanks, Fred. Dan, what we're talking about, first thing, we're going to go right back to the top. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of March 19th.
No move.
Second.
We're good, Michelle? We have five? Any discussion about the minutes of March 19th?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Danny, on, on the second page, the third page of that document, where it says Section 6 incurring debt-
Yeah.
-we're going to add the last sentence, debt may be incurred by the district if approved by the member towns in accordance with the committee's chosen method under Mass General laws, Chapter 71, Section 16, D, or Section 16, N. Mr. Reed will give you a quick synopsis of that.
You can have that.
Okay, thank you, Frank.
Do you want a motion first, and so moved? Second.
Okay, discussion.
Dan, it's just to make sure that it's clear that the, under D, that the selectmen have some options there of either taking it to the town or giving it back to the school committee, saying, go ahead and you may incur that debt.
Okay.
And whereas N requires, if the school committee voted to go with N, and it would have to go to the towns for a vote, but D says the selectmen have 60 days and wish to decide how to handle it. So it just gives them some flexibility, and it's just, that's what the law says.
That's basically what we're doing now. We're doing that now.
Right.
I agree with that, yeah.
Okay, any further discussion about the last sentence? Seem none? All those in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. Okay, the next one, Danny, is the withdrawal piece of pre-K to 8.
Which section?
The discussion, it's right under that last one of incurring debt. Just go right to the next one.
Vote required, okay.
Okay? And the question that we have here, and Fred and Jim, are not at odds, they're, they're just both concerned. Should be, should be add the language or shouldn't we? Now, Mac, again, you want to fill Danny in on where you think we already have this coming?
Okay, the, this, your committee voted a month ago to delete that whole section that would allow one town to get out, to say we're going to get out of pre-K to 8-
Right.
-of the region. And this group said, should we, if we're all in, we should withdraw, we'd take that language out, because we have another section that talks about how either town could initiate changing the regional agreement. The difference is, what's in there now is, would require both towns to agree to change the regional agreement. This that has been removed would allow one town, you know, laterally, to say that they were pulling out of K to 8.
So you're saying if, in fact, what we were looking to do, it's almost like a pre-nup, you know? Our town administrator's concern was the fact that if a town did want to be regionalized PK through 8 like we used to before, that we eliminated that, but in fact, you're saying no, because if, say Whitman did it, well, then Hanson would have to. Is that what you're saying?
Well, they would have to have a new regional agreement that would say that now you're only nine through 12, yes.
So, if, in fact, say, townspeople of Whitman or Hanson, because one may grow faster than the other, decided to say, well, I'd rather go back to the old way and go deregionalize, make it PK through eight for the town, and then regionalize high school like we used to, what would be the process for either Whitman or Hanson to go through that?
Okay, the process is spelled out here, but the, the big difference is that both towns would have to vote to agree to that.
One way or another.
That's the only difference, really. Whereas this allows one town to do it unilaterally.
Okay.
Meaning one count, one town can do it without the vote of the other town?
Correct.
Yes.
It preserves the right of the town to be able to take the P, pre-K through eight piece away from the region.
So, one town can't do it, both have to do it?
No, 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 one town could. Okay, the, with, with this language removed...
Right.
There would have to be a negotiation and a new regional agreement drawn up, in which both towns would have to approve. So, technically, let's say Whitman decided, we wanted to pull out.
Right, town meeting has that, if they have that option, if they want it.
We've gone through, we want to put up the $30 million necessary for OPEB, blah, 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 blah.
And all the whole ball, actually.
Okay, we want to pull out, but we want to keep the high school regionalized.
Right.
All right. Now, we would, with the language in there, we would have that right, because it's part of the regional agreement. Without this language in here, it would have to be, a new regional agreement would have to be negotiated between the two towns.
So, you're saying we already have in the agreement that we drew up by a limit, by not having that PK through eight out of there, we already have something in the agreement that allows us to do that?
Correct.
Why didn't Frank see that, then?
No, 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 what he, what he was looking at, we took that out.
Right.
And when we took that out, now it's not automatically in there. It was in the prior, the original agreement, it was in that.
Right.
But we removed that paragraph, we removed that language, therefore making it a necessity for new agreement to be drawn up, and if both towns didn't want to do it, if Hanson didn't want to do it, you couldn't, they could say, tough luck, you're either pulling out completely...
Right. Which would deregionalize everything.
And everything's deregionalized, okay, or you stay in.
Okay, I will expound you that to Frank. I can, I understand where you're going. I, I just thought that, right, it's either have to be, how does Hanson feel about, do they want that option or not?
We haven't heard any...
Well, I should say...
You should.
There's a withdrawal mechanism, that's the thing we're saying, there is a withdrawal mechanism.
Okay.
No matter how you want to withdraw, but both towns have to go.
Right, whether you want to withdraw just PK through eight or the entire region, there's an option to do either or.
It's already covered.
Okay.
No matter what you do, Dan, if you withdrew a member town, the regional agreement would have to be rewritten.
Right, of course.
Period.
Or dissolved. Because if you withdrew, in other words, without this language in here, okay, and you said, we want to withdraw PK through eight, okay, and let's say it was Whitman saying it, Hanson could say, no. We say, no, you're not going to do that. You're either going to pull out completely from the region, so then there's no more regional agreement...
Right.
Okay, or you're going to stay in, one of the two.
And let's both towns come to a conclusion that, yeah, I think it's better that we PK through eight, each town takes care of it, and we regionalize the high school like we used to.
That would be the new agreement.
That would be, that would be a whole new agreement.
That's a whole nother scenario.
But for the last 27 years, it's worked.
Yeah, well, oh, no, no, no. I'm not saying, no, no one's saying that it hasn't worked. What we're saying is, there was, we had an option, now it was taken away from each, each the town. They had that option, right, but it was taken away. Like I said, it's almost like a prenup, you know?
Yeah. So, the other piece of it, though...
Go ahead.
In, realistically, could a member town afford...
Probably not.
...to even go from PK through eight and pull out?
No.
They'd have to put up a $25 million bond.
Right. No, no, we...
More money, probably.
Totally understand that. We, we was just saying, financially, and, and the way it works, it'd be better we stay regionalized, but it was an option that the, both towns had that we took away.
By leaving it, by, by leaving the language in there, it's preserving a right to each town.
Right, and we took that away.
By pulling it out, the towns are losing that right.
Right, but, but we have it in a diff, we have it in a different aspect.
You don't, well, you don't. You don't have that right.
Right.
You just have a, a procedure to withdraw from the district.
There's still a mechanism, the other part of the agreement to pull out.
Well, to pull out, but you're pulling out completely, and the only way that you would remain...
Write up a new regional agreement.
Something, some part of the region is to write up a new regional agreement.
Well, you're not necessarily pulling out completely, Fred, because what could happen is, the town of Whitman will say, could say to the town Hanson, we want to be out pre-K to eight. Hanson might say, and we're not suggesting is, go.
Yeah.
And then, it's, it stays regionalized.
Right.
Didn't say it has to be all or nothing, that's a negotiable part of that agreement.
Exactly, or they could say, we don't want it, you know, PK to eight. We want eight to, eight to 12 to be regionalized.
Exactly.
All right, right, middle, middle and high.
Right.
Right. But you're saying...
At which point you would want a new agreement?
There's a mechanism in there.
There's a mechanism in there, okay.
Have Ruth explain that to Frank.
Any further discussion, before we move to the vote?
I've already been in there, right.
It was just a concern that our town administrator had...
Okay.
That we took, that we took something away from town meeting.
Yeah, we already voted it, that's true.
Yeah, okay.
Well, it still has to, right, but the school committee has to vote.
It's got to go by the school committees, the boards of selectmen.
Right, yeah.
It's got to go by, it's got to go through everybody. We're just bringing a document forward.
Right, and the school committee can vote to put it back in.
Right.
Before we send it to the selectmen.
That's correct. Okay. Yes, I agree. Okay, any more discussion on this discussion to amend the withdrawal?
I'll just reiterate what I had said, I don't feel that by having it in there and preserving the right causes any, any, there's, there's no detriment in my mind to it.
Yep, we can, and we can bring that right up at school committee and see if they want to add it or whatever.
Yeah.
Okay?
If you can explain both ends of it, and let the school committee make their decision, thank you.
Exactly. Okay.
Just thinking about this process, if it goes to the school committee, and the school committee accepts it the way it is, and obviously, there's no issue, I think if the school committee were to add that piece, it probably wouldn't be a problem. But I think based on what you were saying earlier, Fred, that if the school committee wants to put that back in, I think we need to add some language about the liabilities, like, like is in there now for the withdrawal part, that to make sure it's clear what, what the cost would be and how that would be divided up. So, if that were to happen, then we probably would need another...
Need another meeting?
Either another meeting of this, or at least it's going to have to go back to DESE to say it's now different than what they've seen.
Would you actually need to remove, yes, or you could just reference these paragraphs...
You could.
...within that section, because these speak of pulling out completely.
Right.
This speaks only of, should they want to resume jurisdiction over the pre-K through eight.
Right. I think you could reference that, but I just think it would need to be in there someplace.
Okay. Everybody happy with the discussion?
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's out there. Frank said he just wanted to put it out there for the committee, and then let the school committee make their decision.
Okay. Does anybody from the public have anything to say? I don't think there is. I'm just going down the list. An entertainer motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, thank you. I think you've got it.
Thank you for holding it up.